We're going to open this meeting of the October 11th Planning Board. Hold this meeting both live and on Zoom, but if we should lose the electronic connection, which is being done as an effort to include as many as possible, the meeting will not be suspended. We'll make the best effort we can. So we'll open with public input. I don't think it's necessarily to read every week the public input policy, so I'll waive the reading if no one objects. And is there anyone in the room or in the Zoom chat who would like to speak in the public input session? Seeing none. Next up, we have continued discussion with NIMCOG about the MBTA zoning, our effort being to hopefully reduce our district into a couple of different possibilities slash plans that we can present to a broader audience for their input. My hope would be that we can, as a board, get behind a plan that we can all agree upon, that we can then eventually bring the proposal to the state and then to town meeting. I think in the past when we've had zoning issues and we've brought them to town meeting without concurrence amongst ourselves, that's proven problematic in terms of getting things to generate wider support. So I would like to just express that as my hope and wish, and hopefully we can all get on board with that. Do we have Mike?
I don't see him. He knew that we were meeting tonight. I told him 6:30.
Okay.
But I think the general discussion, the board should be able to proceed.
Yeah. So the schedule, the timeline, it seems like we're on pace. I did not, yeah, I did bring that, actually. So revised district boundaries and select dimensional standards, incomplete but well in progress. And then draft zoning, this as we started, I don't really feel like we've started.
I think, I think Mike has.
Okay.
There's a state model.
Okay.
But I think the key here is that if the board intends to submit for the April town meeting, our normal sensitive date is the Select Board signing of the warrant. That takes place on February 26th. And as the board knows, ideally, the language that is signed as part of the warrant is as close to final as possible. But with MBTA zoning, as you recall, there's a, there's a state requiring 90-day review and approval process. So NIMCOG has identified submission date of November 28th. So...
It's Thanksgiving this year?
Probably, yeah, that, right around there. The point being is that I think it's pretty critical for the board to identify, you know, the districts that you want to proceed with, get the input from whatever town departments, committees, boards, and then either simultaneously or quickly thereafter, begin to draft and finalize the zoning.
Yep.
So it's a condensed timeline.
So I felt like the last time we had come up with most all, if not all, were generally in accord with doing the UMass.
Yeah.
As our large district. And then we need at least one more district. So we had talked about the UPS, we had talked about the...
Radisson.
Radisson, and we had talked about the Littleton.
110.
I mean, the Littleton Road 110 corridor. So I guess maybe if people have more further thoughts on that, that they want to expound on or clarify, if they have kind of reached a more, more of a conclusive thought on that.
I don't know. I'd be happy either with 110 or with Radisson. I mean, I think they're equally reasonable. If we were to consider 110, I would suggest, and I know Chris agrees with me on this as well, that we exclude the trailer park. Because, quite frankly, that's the one place that if we opened it up. Now, there's some, there was some court action on that some years ago. I don't know what the current status is on what is limiting the current owners of the property from changing its use. I don't know. Do you have any, do you remember that well enough?
I don't remember anything specific. There is a state discontinuing statute that protects mobile home parks, and I believe it's a two-year, a two-year process.
Yeah, but there were other things. There had been some legal action, maybe 10, 12 years ago.
No, I'm not, I don't recall that.
I don't remember exactly what the, what the, the source of it was. But in any case, I would suggest if we consider 110, which I think we ought to at least consider, that we exclude the trailer park.
So would you just stay to one side of 110?
No, just the whole thing except the trailer park. I mean, the trailer park is at the end on one side.
No, I agree. But then you have the, you have multifamily right there on the left.
Pretty much all of it's multifamily.
Townhouses. Then you get coming back, you get single family, and then you have the new, at the corner of Hunt Road, then you have the new development on a left-hand side only. I'm talking about the left-hand side.
Left-hand going south?
So if you go on the left-hand side, heading towards Westford.
Okay.
You got the development on the left, the new...
Right, then you got a couple, a couple of singles.
Single-family homes, and then you got duplexes.
Then it's duplexes, yeah.
Townhouses, and then you get the trailer park.
Right. And coming back, it's all...
So I would, I would just maybe suggest that you take everything on the north side, one hole all the way up.
If it, if it yields enough land.
Well, you have the part before Hunt Road, where it includes the bank, and then there's some multifamily apartment buildings that are there now.
That's true.
And then you have Kensington, is it Kensington?
No, it's not a bad, not a bad way to do it.
All the way up on the right-hand side. And that stays away from the trailer park. And then it's not just, not just spot zoning, saying just the trailer park, you leave the whole left side, the regular...
No. Okay, man, that's, that's fair enough.
That's a good thought.
My, my thought is there's really no amenities out there. I mean, you're pretty... Until you get to Westford, you want to send them to Westford to do their shopping? You know what I mean? Like, that's where they would go shopping, Westford.
Unless you want auto parts.
Yeah, auto parts or, you know.
There's a lot of people in Chelmsford that go to Westford already.
No, I know, I know. I know. But I mean, does it help the town? I don't know. I think Radisson would help the town.
I, I think Radisson's not bad. I mean, I, I think they're both good.
The Radisson is where, you're making an assumption that the Radisson, it's not going to come down and something else will be built. And they actually added the other parcel, I think where the Chinese restaurant is. Like, it's not just the Radisson parcel.
No, they have to have more than one parcel.
I get that. But I just want to make sure that, like, people are not going in there going, oh, well, it's already five stories. It's going to, they're just going to gut it out and that'll be it. Because...
Right. No, I think that's a good point.
It might cost more money for them to renovate it than it would be to tear it all down and rebuild a new one.
My understanding from sitting, my understanding, there's a mold problem in that building.
Right.
So it may well be. And I think, to your point, I think that's a very good point. I actually was driving around there the other day, and there's a very large parking lot off to the left.
Yeah.
And I was thinking, boy, if you added another five-story building on that parking lot, then you would potentially have...
This is where we need NIMCOG, I think, because he said that can't be done, the way it's set up.
Okay, right. So I want to know about that. And I also want to know, I mean, because we've also talked about the part of the building's only two stories, we really probably wouldn't have to worry about that. But if they took the building down, then the whole thing could be rebuilt five stories. But I guess I'd also want to know, to what extent could we zone it in, with wordsmithing it, so that it would be no more than X number of units? And, and no more than, I mean, they'd still need setbacks, they'd still need the FAR requirements to some extent. And so how, to what extent could we constrain it?
The limitation is going to be 15 per acre. And, and, you know, no amount of playing around with number of allowable units is really going to get you around that limitation.
We can design it, like, in a manner that we would like it.
Exactly.
So that's where I would like to...
Yeah, we do with heights and setbacks.
This, this is an entranceway to the town. So like, I'd like us to really, like, if we're going to do that, A, can we, I'm not thrilled with the five stories. Like, if it's, the five stories is there right now, so if they renovate it, stays like that, then I'm fine with it.
Right.
But I'm not necessarily okay with adding the whole area five stories.
Right.
And can we make sure that it's pleasing when you drive by it? Like, not some big box.
If they raise it, to what extent can we constrain it?
Right.
Will you let us know when Mike comes on?
Yeah, he just emailed. See what he said.
He just came on?
He emailed.
Said he was not planning on joining tonight. It's news to me.
Oh.
Well, I don't know. I look, I look at the five-story question.
That would be my...
So if you guys have concerns with that, then I guess 110 would be the...
No, I'm not necessarily have concerns, but those are the two things I just want to make sure that...
I don't want to lose the Hong Kong, you know.
He modeled it.
Statution, I get it. It was my office. I get it. So, you know.
Well, you know, as to the five stories, I mean, one thing that that site has is...
Going to log on in 10 minutes.
It's got the, it's got the highway behind it, which is two stories worth anyway. So, you know, it's, it's not exactly that it's shielded, but, you know, if there were nothing there, you'd still be looking at a two- or three-story high lump or something.
He modeled it at three, three floors as well.
I mean, I personally don't object to five stories out there.
I wonder if we could stipulate that if it stayed in this current building, in the current structure, like, it could stay in the current footprint and/or actual structure, in which case it could stay at five feet. But if it was deviating from the current footprint, that then it would have to be three stories.
Good question. Look at that. My thoughts on that property is I think it makes sense for a couple of reasons. One, you've got, you have an old hotel that goes back to the 80s. It's basically abandoned at this point.
Yeah.
I don't think, as Tuanita said, it's not, it's nowhere in moving condition, although I have not been in, just things I've heard, condition issues. And I'm not trying to run down anyone's property, but when you drive in Alpine, the things that I think make sense is it has a traffic light to allow traffic to enter, enter an exit onto 110. On the left, you've got a dated strip mall. And on the right, you've got some older buildings that have had vacancy problems over the years.
Yeah.
So I think, I say I don't like Alpine Lane, but if something was to happen, yeah.
That's why I was suggesting that last meeting is to take the whole Radisson and bring it all the way to 110.
Yes.
And to overlay those developments all the way up to even up to Walgreens, up to that area. And if it gets developed, it gets developed. But if it gets developed with mixed-use and housing, in, under this overlay, that we can clean it up. I mean, Anita, I agree with you. It's a gateway coming in.
Yeah.
So it's just that, but I think, I think when we were talking the five stories, it was just strictly where the Radisson is now, not that whole area.
Right. I would, yeah, the only thing with, like, I don't want to do it under, like, I don't want, oh, sorry, the MBTA.
It would do a, like, a village thing.
Yes. I would, I want us to really look...
Like the Chelmsford Mall. I still think we should revisit the Chelmsford Mall.
Yeah, I really do, too.
Separately, you know what I mean? Separately.
But I do like the village thing as well. But I like us first to, before we even start adding more housing, like, on the village thing, I think we have, like, issues with RC in this.
Right. I think we should, first of all, I think, I don't think, I like that idea, but I agree with Anita. I don't think that should be part of this MBTA, just because of the density.
And we have no control.
And a lack of special permit requirement. Like, I don't like the byright, that density. But I think that might, with a different density, that would be a good, with a different overlay, that would be a good thing to do, all the way up to the mall. All the way up to, what is it, Zayer's? Except for on that side of the street.
Wow, really dating.
Well, I don't know.
I wouldn't go all the way up. I would, because that's, the Chelmsford Mall area is totally separate. That's a half a mile away than this area. So I wouldn't, I would not connect the two physically. That would be, there's a lot of residences in between.
No, I wouldn't touch the residential part. So maybe only the other side of the street. Anyway.
So what do we want to guide them?
Okay, so, so I think we should get a little more guidance from Mike when he arrives, if we can, if, we had asked him to give us numbers for the 110, I think on the right side. Did we not?
Hopefully just alright.
He originally modeled 110, the RM zoning only.
Yeah.
The RM zoning is...
Can we pull that up on the screen?
All before, yeah, let me do that. Before Hunt Road.
Before Hunt Road.
Well, perhaps what, perhaps what we can say is, look, we'd like to take UML as the primary, and we're looking at these two as secondary. Give us a workup on those and we'll, you know.
And then we'll present those.
We've limited the problem substantially. We've, we've taken Riverneck out, and we've taken something else out. I can't remember what it was.
That's both sides of the road, or is that just one? Oh, it is the right side.
This is what NIMCOG initially modeled for 110, was the, the orange area.
Right side of 110.
Yes.
Right side of 110, but also to the right of Hunt Road, right?
Yep, north of, north of, I mean, south of Hunt Road.
That's all zoned RM, and it's all built out.
So we were talking about, and then the conversation I was having is take that orange all the way down. Yep.
Right.
Just stay on that north side of 110.
That's what some members, I think Nana Arroway and a couple others suggested the board look at.
I think that makes sense.
And stay away from the south side of, of 110.
And is the...
The trailer park is and all that.
But you don't need, you don't need to mathematically.
Yeah, I would...
Yeah, we don't want to, what do you mean? Don't need to, you don't need to go all the way, you're saying?
Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't give the state any more than...
Is the right side, the orange part on the north side?
This area here.
It's a budding 495 and, and 110.
Yeah.
That big development.
Does that include the area just beyond the quarry? Is that where it starts?
No, no. Hunt Road's like before that, right?
It starts, yes, at the town, at the open space.
Oh, oh. So it's before.
Yeah, it's right out, as you're heading up.
It stops right, right at the Bible Church and Hunt Road.
Oh, so it's before.
Yeah.
So the bank and the...
They have older condos at this point, too.
And the condos.
Foxwoods, Chelmsford Woods, the recent David Haddison project with town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, and that covers us right there.
Yeah.
Well, that, that combined with, I think, I think UMass would...
Yeah, that would do nicely.
It may be over. I'm trying to find the original analysis.
Like the banks in there, there's an enterprise bank in there.
I couldn't find, I was looking this afternoon, like, my MBTA file's too big, so I couldn't find what I was looking for. But I, in one, in one of the slides that Mike made for us, he did what we would expect as short-term, medium-term, and long-term potential development for each of the districts. Did he do that for this district?
Yes.
I couldn't put my hand on that.
Yeah.
So these are all...
Because I'd like to know, what's the short term on this?
Very limited. It's all built out, it's all condo associations.
Lots that could be...
All condo associations.
Right.
Maybe the church, maybe, but they use it, right?
Yeah, it's kind of, you know, I think looking forward beyond this, you know, I was polishing my crystal ball the other day. And what it's telling me is, the state's going to go through this whole MBTA zoning thing. Every town anywhere near any of this is going to set it up so that practically nothing can be built. The state's going to sit on it for two or three or four years, and they say, this isn't working. And then we're going to get something else. And the something else that we get will be, well, depending on your point of view and how you feel about providing housing, it might seem quite onerous, certainly to, to those who, who dream of Chelmsford as a bastion of, of nice, single-family, things with gardens.
Yeah.
You know, and it's going to come, it's, it's going to come to us sooner or later.
Well, I mean, I guess...
We may not be on the board when it does, but...
To that point, I mean, I wonder if we have actually managed to create some housing out of the MBTA, if we would be exempted from the more onerous...
Ah, it's hard to say. I kind of doubt.
Chelmsford's grown, I mean, in 10 years, we, like, we've taken care of the middle because if you look at how much we've grown in, in 10 years, we've grown about 10,000 residents. Most of that is single families being converted into two families. All you have to do is go down across the street here and see how many two families are being built. And that's because we, and so we've been addressing that missing middle. I mean, I don't think, you know, Concord has, I don't think Lexington has, I don't think Bedford has. None of those towns have incentivized that type of conversion. So, and yet, you know, here we get this MBTA mandate. Did they look at us and say, oh, Chelmsford, you guys have already been doing that?
No.
No, they won't. So, like, I think we just, I think we need to, if we're going to go down this MBTA zoning, I think we also need to make sure that we tighten up other stuff and unincentivize these conversions. Because I think going in front of town meeting, we need to give back to the residents if we're going to be trying to give them something here, like, trying to take something away, in the sense that they're going to see this as more housing.
Well, except that if we pick these two districts, that we're pretty much setting it up so that there's no housing going to get generated.
Short-term, but...
If you were looking for something short-term, it would be the Radisson.
Right.
Yeah.
That would probably be the most chance of getting renovated.
Yeah, and, and probably the most benefit to the town in some respects, too.
Yes. 110's not going to happen.
No, not, not, not while we're on this board.
Not in 20 years.
Here's the 110, as I mentioned. I'm going to bring up the, I'll bring up his, the initial assessment. Well, not able to bring it up, but it's 48 acres, 43 of which are developable, 16.6 developable density, a unit capacity of 721.
That's half R.
Right. And...
What's the, wait, what is the number of units?
721. And if you, and then if you combine that with UMass West, it had a unit capacity of...
1,000.
1,000.
So you're over.
So we're over.
Will that make us look better for the state?
It doesn't matter.
Maybe we should shrink down that district.
Yeah, we shrink down, like, again, I would, I would give the district, I would give the state as little as possible.
I think they'll just, you know, they'll take what they want.
Mike is joining us now. Mike, thanks for joining.
So Mike, we've just been discussing...
Sorry about any confusion there may have been, but thanks for joining.
Yeah, no problem.
We've just been discussing our, trying to narrow our plans. And I think we have buy-in that everyone concurs that we're, will likely proceed using the UMass West as our primary district. And then we're down to, I think, deciding between the 110 quarter on Littleton Road, possibly the, the district that you had blocked off initially, the RM for 721 units, 48 acres, possibly shrinking that down a bit versus alternatively the Radisson as a secondary parcel. And we did have a question about the Radisson. If we were to pick the Radisson site, would we be able to zone the area in such a way that if the building was kept in its current footprint, that it could remain at five stories? Even, and even if they took it down but built it back in the same footprint, I would be okay personally with that. I don't know about other people, we haven't necessarily discussed that. But, but that if they took it down and raised it, that, and then we're trying to use more of the square footage, that it could only be three stories tall, which is comparable to the rest of our zoning?
Yeah, I've never seen zoning written that way, where, where it would be allowed out on the existing building at that height. But then, if it was, if there was new development or it was torn down, it would be, you know, at a different height requirement anywhere else except for that footprint.
Isn't what you say basically inherent in the notion of the grandfathering that you get with non-conforming use?
Well, it would be a change of use, though.
Yeah.
Because the, it's a hotel use, and then, you know, it would be changed to a residential use.
Didn't he do it on three stories already, though?
You, you had modeled it on three stories. So was that predicated on someone taking two stories off or raising it and rebuilding it at three stories?
No, given a variance, I think, for the...
I think we just did that, just because the, there was a three-story cap on all, all the zoning sub-districts that, that we had modeled. So it really didn't take into account that what was there, it was a five-story building.
So if it did get redeveloped, it would be at three stories, if that answers your question.
Under that circumstance. So then if that was the case, how many units was that?
400 something.
Which scenario?
The three-story model of the Radisson.
The three-story Radisson Alpine Lane.
360.
Did you model it at three? At the, at the neighborhood meetings?
You did.
Didn't you present a three-story?
I believe you did.
I believe that it was presented at both three and, and five.
Here it is, here it is. Yeah, three-story. 374.
And that gives us our number with UMass?
Not quite.
Not quite, right.
But we could always go four.
Yeah.
You know, that would probably do it.
I'm not, I think, I think the five-story was what you needed to, because I think we even went up to, with it at five stories, we increased the UMass Lowell area to the gross density of 1 to 16 instead of 1 to 15.
So you could, if you wanted to keep Radisson at three floors, that area, you could add another parcel potentially.
Some of 110?
Some of Alpine Lane, heading towards 110.
Or Meeting, or Meeting House Road would, would be another, an adjacent.
You don't want to see three stories there at all?
Oh, well.
Meeting House.
There's a lot of open space there that can be redeveloped.
You can add the, the post office.
Yeah.
That's not going to happen.
Well, it might be.
Doubt it.
I would add the post office.
Including Route 110 RM as modeled with, with those, with all those parcels, is 721. You could, you could eliminate some of those parcels and get, get closer to 400. And then you'd, between UMass West, you'd be at, you know, 1,400.
Can we take the Hong Kong out of it?
With the, with the Radisson Alpine, you'd have to, if you wanted to keep it at three stories, you'd have to add, add a parcel, not take away a parcel.
How about if we took away the Hong Kong, added the post office, and...
We'll throw in the cowash. In that little dental office.
Dental office, the one we just approved?
No, the one next to 495. Is that part of the parcel?
The old...
There's, you know, if there's, if there's sensitivity around the Radisson, regardless of what option you choose, five or three, to Anita's point, that the notion that the buildings could come down, if that's an increased sensitivity on crafting zoning that gets you what you want, you may be better off leaving the Radisson out completely and going with 110.
Yeah.
And if you overshoot by 300 units...
That's good.
You know, maybe the state looks at that as somewhat of a, you know, checking an extra box. And based upon the, the analysis, there's limited near-term opportunity because they're all, all built-out condo associations.
I like that idea, I think.
I do, too.
And then, and then at that point...
At this point, leave Radisson alone.
And then at that point, between UMass West and 110, maybe there's a lower sensitivity about the zoning. It may not need to be as crafted as, as customized as Radisson or UPS or any other, you know, potentially developable site.
Well, I mean, we could, in other words, we could do just more of a generic three-story top, looking for quads or triplexes or court yards.
Correct, but the, but the height, there wouldn't be heightened sensitivity.
Right.
The Radisson, I think, there's, there's, there's a likely possibility that the buildings come down regardless of what, it's MBTA zoning or not MBTA zoning.
Yeah, it could well be. So shall we, shall we go with UML and 110 and get a finalized plan for that?
I think that's our best...
I'm good with it.
Has the UMass Lowell agreement, have they signed that?
Yeah.
Like, not, like, they per, like, the purchase and sales, like, has that gone through?
No, not scheduled till end of calendar year at the earliest.
Did they get the?
But they have signed the development agreement.
Right, but they haven't bought the property yet.
Correct.
The party that's signed, like, so, because I was doing a search on mass registry of deeds, and I couldn't find this development agreement tied to the deed yet.
Correct, and it doesn't have to be. The development agreement is a standalone legal document.
Okay, but then that's.
It references, it references the existing property owner and any future property owners.
So I thought Paul had said that it was tied to the deed of the property.
It will be, but it doesn't, it's a standalone document, meaning as Paul indicated, it's, it's in full, it's in full force and effect right now.
Okay, but any document can be renegotiated?
He indicated that that is, that is a legal possibility.
Right.
But it would require the Select Board to agree to it.
Right.
And not town meeting?
No, not town meeting.
Yeah, but the problem is, like, my concern about this, just because I've been in a lot of renegotiating contracts, is they say, they come up, right, we own this MBTA community with higher density, and they go, hey, we want to renegotiate our contract. We say no. Select Board says, nope, we're not doing it. We have this agreement. This is what we said. That, they go, okay, we'll sue you. That goes to court. And how does that stand up in court when they said, well, you as a town designated that you want higher density? So how can you say no to this?
No, I don't think there's any problem. I don't see a legal issue.
Well, I think Paul, when we talked about this, Paul said that you couldn't be forced to renegotiate an agreement. The scenario he painted was that they would go to DHCD and say, or, I'm sorry, whatever, EOHLCA, something or other.
PWEIT.
It used to be DHCD, I know it's DHCD. And say, hey, you know, they're in violation of their MBTA zoning because we wanted to do this, and they said no, and that that might be how it comes around to bite us, is through DHCD.
Yeah.
But I don't think it would bite us too bad because we're at 12 units per acre there already.
Yeah.
So what's the difference?
Well, I mean, people are more comfortable if the purchase and sale is signed with this developer first.
To even worry about.
Additional 70 units.
Yeah, but I, like, like, we have our agreement. This is a good developer. I just don't, like, I wanna make sure it goes through with him, or him, this firm.
I think they went so above and beyond to get every neighbor, never mind the town boards and the towns.
Yeah, but.
Everyone involved and on board, that like, to, I mean, they spent.
Well, that's what I want them, like, that's why, like, I'm concerned that they hasn't, they haven't signed their purchase and sale, so they don't own it yet. So like, if this goes belly up.
I think they're waiting for all their, like, permits and things, aren't they not?
They have completed all of their local permitting, and they've just completed their state permitting.
Why are they waiting to sign that?
They've indicated to the town that they are, will be purchasing no later than end of first quarter of next year.
They're putting in a sewer treatment plan. I'm sure that slows them down.
They had some, they had some delays with the state permitting.
Now, did we get what we were waiting on?
Paul indicated that even if Trammell decided to bail out today, and they, and they, they sell their zoning permit, the new developer is still, still tied to the development agreement.
Unless he backdoored it one.
And I think Paul's point's a good one. It's, we've set it up for 12 now. It goes to 15. The risk is relatively small, or the risk, the risk reward product is relatively small.
The benefit to them.
Yeah.
Versus the detriment of starting a whole contract.
I don't think they would even go there.
I mean, I'd be much more worried about UPS in that regard, because that's a place where, bang, you could wind up with a huge development very quickly.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it would help in our, to make our intentions clear that if we're designating this area for MBTA zoning, that we're also not interested in reneging or renegotiating the development agreement, so that.
We don't have to say that to anybody.
I think that goes without saying. I think, I think when we were, when we were doing the whole plan in the first place, it was kind of predicated on, we're working towards this, and this would fit in with that plan.
Yeah, but the MBTA zoning comes after that, and so one could argue, well, you changed your mind.
No, it was already in the works. We just didn't know the guidelines yet. They were still being finessed.
They were aware that that was cooking.
Question, Evan, did the, we were waiting, or you were waiting, or, I don't know, Trammell Crowe was waiting, on information from David Hettison in order for some of the permitting to proceed? Is that all squared away?
Yep, that's all, yep, they've submitted everything.
Okay.
Okay. Let's just, let's just go with, with 110 and UML, get a finalized plan and...
I concur.
I personally would like to have the 110 thing shrunk down a little bit, so it's not possibly an extra couple hundred units.
Thank you, I agree.
Yeah, wouldn't hurt.
Maybe just make, if.
Maybe just keep it to the right-hand side.
Mike, if we could say it on the north side of the street.
Do that.
Only.
It is.
It is only the north side.
No, there's that little bit on the south side.
I think it's all on one.
It was all on the north side, the RM zoning. So, Mike, are you able to shave that down?
I have to see how many hours we have left for, within the scope for modeling.
Okay, yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Kind of gone over, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I'm good with the size of that right now, myself.
If, if it's, if it's, you know, if it's, if it's a small amount of, of budget, let me know, and, you know, we can, we can cover that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So then, Mike, Mike and I will work offline, get a budget in place. We can send you a reduced 110 RM so that the, we're not 200 or 300 units over. That's a new district, so we have not engaged with that neighborhood. I assume you want to do a similar neighborhood engagement. We'll also have to work with NIMCOG to find some supplemental money for that. Do you wanna, when do you want to do that neighborhood engagement, and when do you then want to schedule?
I mean, I would say as soon as possible, and I don't know if it's not realistic to have that be the same, at the same time as, or at a separate time slot, the same day as a more wider meeting with the other town boards?
Could do, could do both, maybe back-to-back, seven to eight, eight to nine, something like that. So you want us to try to identify a meeting on early November to suit that need?
And then be working concurrently on the zoning. It sounds like in this case, Mike, are we correct that if we're doing these two districts, that the zoning would be more boilerplate, looking towards designing for that area in the middle?
Yeah, I, I don't, they'd be two sub-districts because they're not contiguous, but I think you could probably use the same, same development standards.
And you're developing those for other communities as well, and would they be similar?
Yeah, yeah, it's based off of the, the state model bylaw.
So when you're, in your timeline, you identified November 28th as a submission?
Yeah, that's, that would be 90 days prior to the, the warrant signing on February 26th.
Okay. So that's the ideal scenario. I mean, I don't know if the zoning's gonna be, I don't know if the board's review is gonna be complete by the 28th.
Of November?
Yeah, if we do a, if we do a first week, second week in November, neighborhood meeting and board departmental input, on November 8th, I guess Mike can submit the first draft of zoning. You'd have to finalize it on November 22nd. That's doable?
It's tight.
Just because it's, it's a boilerplate zoning at this point? We're not customizing anything?
Could we do a special meeting in between?
You could.
If we have to.
You could.
Can we do zoning before, I mean, like, start the zoning already?
Yeah, yeah, yep. I forgot about October 25th. So, Mike, you're able to maybe present a first draft of zoning for October 25th?
Let me check my schedule.
Thank you, I forgot about November, October 25th.
It's gonna be tight, but I could, I could, I could try, next week is, there are a few night meetings in other towns that I have to attend, workshops. But I, I think I can at least get, get a good draft started.
Okay, why don't we plan on that? Maybe you can just submit it. If you can join us, great. Okay, so, so zoning, start the zoning on October 25th, NIMCOG zoning on November 8th, finalize it on November 22nd. And now we just need to identify a meeting for this neighborhood district meeting as well as departmental board input. On, you looking for their input on the districts, or you looking for their input on the zoning, or both?
District.
Both?
Both? Why would you have their, you want their input on the zoning?
Why not?
They're gonna see it when it comes to town meeting. We won't have it ready by then.
You're working progress.
I mean, we think the districts first, and then get the, and then get our zoning locked down, and then we can follow back up with the, the tri-board and get their buy-in. I don't, I wouldn't see any of the other boards pushing against what the recommendation is for the zoning.
Maybe.
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 I don't know.
I'm easy. I have no preference.
Want to do?
It's earlier is better, is why.
Wednesday, November 1st, Thursday, November 2nd?
Thursday, November 2nd would be better for me. I won't be here for the 25th either. My daughter's graduation in Ireland is that day.
I had you out already. Mike, does Thursday, November 2nd work for you?
I believe it does. I'll have to check with Kelly, see if she's, she's available as well.
Okay.
Other people?
By the way, Mike, you and Kelly did a great job in the two public hearings we've had so far.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I would totally agree with that.
We appreciate it.
It's a huge, huge help.
Yeah, I thought they went really well.
My only thought is I think we should have the neighborhood meeting a different time or a different day than the tri-board meeting.
Okay.
Because if, what happens if the neighbor doesn't go well, and we start to change our mind about some things? You're not gonna have it, you're not, you're gonna be wasting the other tri-board, the other meeting, especially if you, if they're following up the next hour after, you're not gonna have enough time to modify.
Yeah, true. You're right.
Just, I don't know if that works in this, in the calendar or not.
It's like a foregone conclusion.
Because we've taken the feedback from all the neighborhoods so far, and we can't just agree that this 110 is gonna go over very easily. Yeah.
I mean, we have the outline of the meeting from the prior meetings, and we have the outline of this district from the original plan. So I don't necessarily think the meeting will, well, assuming that we can have some help from NIMCOG for that meeting, I don't think that meeting will require a tremendous amount of work in advance because we have kind of the body of it, right? It has to be noticed at least two weeks out, so it would have to be between the 25th and the 2nd, unless we wanted to add it on before the meeting of the 25th. Here.
Could do that.
But you want to take, take some areas away, right? You said you want to make it smaller.
Yeah, I'm gonna work with Mike to make, to make, take a couple parcels out.
But you have to give them a two-week notice, too, for that meeting.
But there's.
Like the neighbors. So that's two weeks today.
Yeah.
I don't think we can touch that size of it at this point. We just gotta run with that. If you're gonna go with 110, he's gotta set out the notice.
Right.
He doesn't really have time to make that smaller, is what I'm saying.
Well, they said they could do, work offline.
I think they, they already agreed they're gonna do that, if it's not too excessive of a cost.
We'll, we'll notice it as the, as all parcels and if, between now and when we present it.
If we trim it, so what?
Okay, then that's probably better.
Yeah. But, I mean, that means you'd have to notice it tonight?
No, it'd be, but I'd get it out by, by Friday, Monday, the latest.
We should probably figure out the density of that area right now, what we have in there, before the meeting.
Well, if you notice it by Friday, is that adequate notice for a meeting on the 25th?
I mean, they'll get it, no, if it goes out between Friday and Monday, they'll get it no later than Wednesday, the 18th, a week prior to.
So we're gonna do that on the 25th?
Like, at the beginning of the meeting?
Okay.
Be the first agenda item? Meet with the neighbors of that district for, I mean, I think we give them an hour like we did the other districts and get their feedback, and that gives us a chance to respond.
So, Mike, does the 25th work for you, and Kelly?
He doesn't know.
I'm not sure. Let me just double-check here.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I can give a tentative. No, it doesn't, it doesn't work for Kelly. But I could probably do it, just that, a neighborhood meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And before the, the planning board meeting or during?
7:00 PM start?
Probably 7:00 PM start, so 7 to 8.
You'd be first.
7:00, 8:00 PM.
Don't we have a big agenda that night, too? Do we might have to move the, the meeting earlier?
I mean, yeah, but you just have to manage it.
You want to move it to 6:30?
Right. Deidre won't be here.
No, so why don't we start at 6:30 if you can?
That's fine.
Earlier the better.
Okay.
So you wanna start at what time?
6:30.
But the MBTA will be 7 to 8.
What do you have before that?
There'll be other items, administrative items, policy discussion, I mean, there'll be something.
That's fine. All right, so it being 7:15, actually 7:20.
Are we good, Mike?
Yep.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be in touch.
We'll touch base offline.
All right, thank you. Sorry about the.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
No problem. Have a good night.
You, too. Okay, so next we have an A and R, Administrative Review, number 684, 17 to 19, and 25 to 27.
It's just an endorsement.
Oh, that's endorsement, sorry, never mind. So, we don't really need to have that on the agenda, right? So...
No, we are, we're reviewing and voting on the Grotton Road A and R, Grotton Road Dunstable.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we did, we didn't vote on that last time?
It says endorse the milars.
Oh, my apologies. Okay, I have the milars here. We did vote on that, right?
Yep.
Okay, I have the milars here, okay.
Okay, so the next one, we had to review and ratify with the modifications suggested by Chris, which were resubmitted by Katie. Did everyone have a chance to look at those?
I added the revised revision date for the supplemental data plan of October 10th in your, the draft you have in front of you.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
All right. Move that we ratify the decision on.
Three Meeting House Road.
Three Meeting House Road.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joel.
Do I vote on a ratifying?
I think so, if you're needed for a quorum.
You're not needed to ratify. The board's already taken the formal vote.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all right.
All right. Next, review of Fall Town Meeting, Article 26, to acquire permanent easement to Nine Acton Road.
So, the reason I wanted to put this on your agenda is that as part of the prep for town meeting at FinCom and Select Board, this particular article... for town meeting at FinCom and Select Board, this particular article generated more discussion than I anticipated. And because it's submitted as a planning board submission, as an outgrowth of your special permit decision, it's likely that a town meeting floor, someone may ask, what's the planning board's position or can the planning board provide more insight as to how this came about? So I just wanted to make sure that the board was refreshed and aware. If you recall, um, rotate this.
The boardwalk to nowhere.
If you recall, your, your decision in the plan have a 10-foot easement along the left side property line, starting from Acton Road going to the rear property line. That is obviously for future planning, of which there is none at this point. So that was part of your decision. Since then, the applicant has, per your decision, has provided the town with a, an easement plan and recorded the plan. The final step is, the town meeting needs to actually accept the easement. This is the, this is the town manager's presentation at town meeting. This slide clearly shows the, the bounds of the easement, again, going from the front of the property to the rear of the property. And what's important is that, I think this is where there was some confusion, the easement to the rear property line doesn't actually go to the brook. If you recall, Grist Mill 1 owns both sides of the brook. So it was the board's attempt, within the spirit and intent of the Center of Village Overlay District, to try to, where opportunities avail themselves to do some, try to do some future planning, assuming that there, at some point in the future, that there is a, a town effort to fund, construct a, a brook walk. I know Anita, you were at FinCom, I don't know if you have any additional insight?
Yeah, I think John, you were there too. So what came up at FinCom and why this was a discussion, cause it doesn't seem like there would be a discussion on this, was the Grist Mill apartments in the back have had some issues with people coming off the bike path, like knocking on doors, trying to get into apartments. And so there was a concern that this would create more traffic on that, connecting it.
If you own this side of the brook though?
I, yeah, I mean, this is just an easement, this is all we're voting on, an easement. To me, we did discuss whether it was really a police issue, more so than...
Anything to do with zoning.
Anything to do with zoning, or the, or the, or the bike path itself, like this walk, you know, if it's a policing issue versus something else. But that was kinda like, this person lives there.
It was a little bit of a side hole.
Did, anything else?
Yeah, I think the concern was, until Evan explained that, I think the perception that was out there is that the easement gave access right up into the brook and so then, at some point in the future, then a bridge would be built over the brook and that would give people clear access into Grist Mill.
But I think the point here is, since Grist Mill owns both sides of the brook, it's completely within Grist Mill's...
Control.
Control. And they can decide, because they're representing all the tenants there.
Yep.
They can decide whether they want to continue and build up some infrastructure around it. Otherwise, it just sits there at the Registry of Deeds forever and ever and ever and in a hundred years from now, some lawyer will be scratching his head, wondering why it's there.
All right, fair enough. I just, again, just wanted to make sure the board was well aware. Uh, like I said, I fully anticipate that someone's gonna ask, was the planning board aware and...
So do you think we should take a vote on whether we support the easement?
Well, does it need it, does it need an up-down from us?
But just one question, if we don't take, if we don't vote for this at town meeting, then we don't have right to this ever, right? Like, like, it's, this is our only...
Elinguished.
Like, this is our only chance to get this right.
That's a, that's a good question. It's likely the case. Town Council, Haverdy, will likely be asked that question on the floor. My understanding is that in order for a, a town to accept an easement, it has to be through town meeting.
Right. I, I thought I...
But you can't like, accept it subsequently.
Yeah, I think Jim said he couldn't.
It seems it's been filed and it has to be...
I don't know if it's a one-time shot or not, I mean, is that, is that your question?
That was my understanding what Paul said.
These are all good questions. I can ask, I can ask Paul via email tomorrow and...
I think what I heard the town manager say was, that was his understanding.
Yeah, I thought so too.
That it would just kind of fall off the tree and die if it...
If it failed.
If it failed, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a reasonable assumption, yeah.
Well...
So I personally think, since this is being presented as a, a planning board article, I think we should vote on our support or lack of support for it, so that, I mean, we were the ones who granted or...
Requested.
Accepted the easement on behalf of the developer to the town and now that, that has to be finalized by town meeting, but I mean, it's kind of the natural conclusion of our original acceptance of the development and the easement, so...
I, I move that we recommend acceptance of this article.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.
Just unanimous as we ever get.
Don't push the envelope.
You wanna take, you wanna take up admin number four now or do you wanna jump to Hilldrath?
I'd like to put it to the end and go to the...
Go to Hilldrath, since people are here.
Yep. So continued public hearing on 10 Hilldrath.
Good evening. For the record, Brian Goodrow with Hancock Associates, on behalf of Property Possible. Unfortunately, my goal of favor, the applicant is not here this evening. He had a family matter to attend to, but I do have Attorney Hausler with me, also representing the applicant. So last time, we, we gave an update and this evening, my goal is to, to give an update on a, a number of the moving pieces that we have going on, whether it's with National Grid, National Heritage, Board of Health, a number of different permits that we have to go through as a part of the permitting for this, as well as, there's a couple of items that were, that were asked by the board last time that we're prepared to address. And I think the key points were discussing the environmental kind of impact assessment, what the criteria the board is looking for, as well as scope on a traffic study, so we can get that commission. So, starting with National Grid, we, we filed a land use application with them, we're doing work within the National Grid easement, there's transmission lines that run across the back of the property. The scope of the work within that easement is exclusive to compensatory flood storage. What we're doing is, we're essentially regrading the area to be at a lower elevation. And what that does is that compensates for the floodplain alteration on Lot 4. The application's been filed, we got initial comments from National Grid and we anticipate in the next couple of weeks to have a formal ascent letter from them. So the process is, we file the land use application, it goes through National Grid's review process and then a formal ascent agreement is issued by National Grid for work within there. Now, in, in terms of the, the scope of what we're doing versus what is allowed within National Grid, they have very specific criteria, it's all listed out on the application and, and regrading within the easement is not a prohibited activity. Usually when you're within utility easements, there's kind of two different concerns that are out there. If you have underground easement, they're worried about cover over their pipes and loading, if you were to put vehicles on there. Here, we have an overhead easement because of the transmission lines, so they're concerned about distances to those, to make sure that we're not reducing below what is required for safety. And because we're in a cut situation, we're actually increasing the distance to those transmission lines. So that's where we are with National Grid. Board of Health, we are required to do a groundwater hydrogeologic study. We've had correspondence with Board of Health, with the Water Department. Northeast Geoscience is our hydrogeologist that is conducting the study. The scope of work was developed by Northeast Geoscience, it was sent to the Water, the Water Department. The Water Department had their independent consultant review of the scope of work, which is AECOM. They commented, we agreed upon what it was. So where we are right now is, three monitoring wells were installed on site, groundwater samples were taken and submitted to the lab. Now, the required testing for those samples was defined by the Chelmsford Water Department and AECOM, their peer reviewer. They're testing things, we're testing groundwater for total suspended solids, turbidity, color, alkalinity, chloride, nitrate, nitrates. There's a whole list of them. They go through basically all of the nutrients, as well as potential contaminants, including VOCs and PFAS, which are of particular concern to the Water Department. We don't have those results back yet, but they will be in the final report. Data, water level data loggers were installed in the monitoring wells, they basically measure where the groundwater is at and we do that for a period of no less than two weeks. And what it does, it measures the groundwater fluctuating as the Chelmsford Water Department wells are actively being pumped, so they can determine what the cone of influence is, essentially. So those have been done, they're actively collecting data this week and NGI is indicating that they should have their final report by the end of the month. So in progress, we're, we're working through it and in a couple of weeks, we'll have a final report. Natural Heritage, we had done a habitat evaluation for rare and endangered species out there, it's part of the conservation permitting process and as required by DEP. The assessment has been done, it's been submitted. Natural Heritage has had it in their hands for a couple of weeks now. We anticipate having a follow-up conversation with them, probably within the next week, and then understand if Natural Heritage will have any requirements for lot development within, within those areas. Now, there were a handful of items last time that we are going to be addressing as a part of our first revision to the plans. Things like the snow storage area, tree clearing, schematic wall design, and revising waiver list and updating kind of how the roadway looks. We'll, we'll have those on our first set of plans, but there was a couple of items that came up that we can address this evening. The board had asked us to look at Lot 4 specifically, in regards to lot area. So lot, and the concern was whether or not it meets the 80% contiguous upland requirement. So from, from the definition of lot area, at least 80% of the lot area required for zoning compliance shall be contiguous land, under than, other than that, under any water body, bog, swamp, wet meadow, marsh, or other wetland as defined in MGL 13140. So Lot 4 is right where Evan has the cursor, it's actually the largest lot and it's the lot that is closest to the wetlands and the river that's down there. So we had, we looked at the total lot area, which is 84,009 square feet, the requirement for lot area is 20,000, so we're over four times what the minimum lot area size is. Now, the wet area on that lot is 374 feet. So basically, the edge of the wetlands and the river at the southern portion, the bottom of the plan, if you will, just barely clips the project proper and is on this lot. So only 374 square feet are actually wet. Additionally, it was asked that we looked at floodplain and buffer area. So we broke out floodplain, we broke out buffer area, floodplain's basically 49,000 square feet, buffer areas are in the neighborhood of 20 or 27,000 square feet, depending on whether you look at explicitly riverfront or if you're looking at wetland buffer, because they're all kind of co-mingled, they're overlapping. But the general gist is, the definition of lot area, upland is anything that's not wet, wet being wetlands, river, brook, stream, pond. So that's the 374 number. Now, if you were to kind of just not look at the definition and consider all of the buffer and floodplain areas that are out there, basically 500, or excuse me, 55,561 square feet is wetlands, floodplain, buffer, riverfront area on that site. The entire lot is 84,009 square feet, which means there's 28,448 square feet of, excuse me, of contiguous upland. So even if you discount the definition, you are still meeting the minimum requirement for that lot. Excuse me.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, not, not a problem. So, that is, that piece of it. It was also asked that we do a little bit more due diligence on a concern about rock walls with historic. Doug has been looking at the definition and I'll let him kind of speak to that, to that aspect of it.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. It's been a while since I've been before all of you, I hope you're all well. There was a question about the stone wall and the right, can it be removed and is it historic, et cetera. So I went through the bylaw, the zoning bylaw and the town bylaws. The only reference that I saw where it would be under planning board jurisdiction to review or consider was under the scenic roads, under section 130-10, which specifically lists the streets that are on the, considered scenic roads and Hilldrath is not on that list. I confirmed that a variety of ways, so. So from my perspective legally, I did not see how the planning board would have any jurisdiction over that question, number one. Number two is, I looked at the term "structure" as it applies to stone walls and it only, in 195-108, it defines a structure as including, the only wall issue was a retaining wall over four feet in height. And that's clearly not what's at issue here, it's a stone wall. In fact, that particular bylaw, that definition of structure doesn't even mention stone walls or fences. So I think it's safe to say, planning board really doesn't have jurisdiction over the issue. And then I also looked at, in the subdivision regulations, section 202-4, that also doesn't have a definition of structure. But the general requirements for subdivisions under 202-12, that further, it talks just generally about what is something that the planning board might have jurisdiction over, does not include stone walls. I was actually a little surprised by that, but it does address cut and fill volume and tree removal, it does not address stone walls at all, they're not mentioned. So, and what we're dealing with now is the stone wall that's going, I believe, from lots one through three and then over to four even maybe, there is a break in the stone wall, if I recall. My eyes aren't that great anymore, but I think that's what I recall. But that wall, that, those lots are going to be recombined and, and redeveloped and they're owned by the client, so he has a right to remove that wall as a matter of this subdivision process. I don't see anything that gives the planning board jurisdiction over that, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you have. I'm not out to pick a fight, I just want to give information. And I hope it addresses the question you had.
Yeah, actually the...
The character of the neighborhood though.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, but that's, that's exactly my point, is that I don't think that the character of the neighborhood affects your rights to consider whether a stone wall can be removed or not.
Changes the character of the neighborhood.
But the bylaw doesn't allow you to review that. And I think, and I'm happy to let town council look at that, but I think you'll agree. I don't think you have jurisdiction over it, quite frankly, but if, if you disagree with that, I'm happy to converse with Paul Haverdy and, and get a further definition for you, but that general character of the neighborhood issue does not apply, it would if it was a scenic road, that I would say. But it, since it isn't, therefore you don't have that jurisdiction, that's all.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to imply that we had jurisdiction and that certainly was not a question in my mind. My, my thinking more was that if it was a historic wall, and this is why I referred the applicant to the historic commission, because they have purview over stone walls and, so I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that we had jurisdiction. And so I didn't, I didn't mean, uh, to imply that we had jurisdiction over that, but I did, as a matter of courtesy to the historic commission, want to know that they were going to have a chance to have seen it and address it under whatever jurisdiction they have. And so, but that was my main interest is, is more just to make sure the different, you know, interested entities of the town would know what's going on and
Well, they'll have opportunities obviously in the, in the process of getting, you know, comment letters and I'm sure they'll provide, you ask all those boards and departments to do so, so.
I think they may, they may have discussed it at their Tuesday meeting.
So, you know, we, we'll, we'll see what they've said and, and then we'll discuss it further. We're not anywhere close to the end of this. So we have some discussion. It's no harm, no foul, as far as I see. But, um, I think Brian tried to address everything else on the questions that you had and you said on that?
Yeah.
So unless there are these, any, I'm just here to address the questions of the stone wall of this. Any questions? I'm happy to try to address them. Or further requests for some, for more information for some reason. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
So as, as the agenda indicates per the, the board's, uh, last meeting with council, there were two primary purposes for tonight's meeting. First one was to, uh, for the board to discuss, um, the advancing scopes for the applicant to engage on a traffic study and a road safety audit. So the, the agenda has the attachments, the two attachments, the first two attachments were provided by, uh, town council. Those, those are examples of submitted reports in other towns. A third attachment, um, uh, one of the attachments is a, um, uh, road safety audit scope, uh, by Vanessa. Vanessa's the board's traffic peer review consultant that she reviews in the past. So those give, those three attachments give you a flavor of, um, a traffic study and then a road safety audit. Um, and I believe a couple of members, um, may have submitted some, uh, initial feedback on those, on those scopes and then some specific additional items for consideration to be included. And then as, uh, Joel mentioned earlier, the second item for review tonight is, um, the scope for the environmental information report. So I think the tasks are the board at a minimum needs to discuss whether you think these are warranted. As soon as you determine that they're warranted, uh, then engage, um, with the applicant on agreeing on how do we get to a scope? And there's a couple of ways that I see of doing it. I think the, the easiest way is for ultimately for the applicant to provide a scope to you for your review and approval. I think tonight, if we can identify any special considerations that we want included in that scope, uh, I think that's, uh, beneficial. The other way of doing it is the board drafts the scope. That may be a little cumbersome and time consuming. Um, but you have a cup, a couple of options, but I think the, the goal is for the board to get its fingerprints, uh, on the customization of the, of the studies.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, um, and it's really, I'm really, it's really too bad Chris is not here, because I think this would be the first time you see Chris and I disagree.
Is that the first time you agree?
Yeah, that we disagree.
Oh.
That, um, I think, well, I think Chris and, and in, in previous discussions and some of the letters from residents, that I think that we tend to look at these things in terms of what we normally get, which is a traffic impact assessment, uh, where you have the, you know, you, you, you do, typically consists of like doing checks on speed. Um, you usually do a traffic audit where you, you know, see how much traffic is actually happening within certain time, periods of time. You do an assessment of the area, you do turning directions, stuff like that, all of that. And my, my, at least my, my own personal interest in this has been with regards to the safety, particularly pedestrian safety. And so, uh, I, you know, the two things that Evan sent us, it was interesting to see that the one that was a more of what I would consider classic traffic impact analysis was done for the applicant. The one that was a, basically a road safety audit, uh, was done for the town. And, and that in particular was I, what I was interested in, because I'm not really interested in, for example, looking at how traffic moves through the area and stuff like that. What I'm interested in is volume of traffic on the street, uh, the geometries of the street, uh, and in particular, you know, assessments of danger or hazard to pedestrians and, and as, and whatever they need to do, whatever information they need to get in order to do that assessment, I want. But it's also, well, we're, what I'm wanting is something a little bit different than what a typical road safety audit is based on at least what I've read about in road safety audit guidelines. Is that they typically look at a situation and then they say, okay, what improvements can we make to reduce, you know, fatalities, accidents, that sort of thing? What we're really doing is we're saying, okay, given that the situation is it is now, and then if you add this development, you know, at full size, will that is essentially create, uh, traffic hazard? Will it create a safety? Yeah. And, and is there something in between? And so that's a little bit different. So that, the, my, my inputs were really based on the idea of that we, we essentially, you know, uh, we, we essentially, uh, have the audit done for us. Uh, and that we do it to specifically answer those kinds of questions. Uh, and, uh, so I, I, I just didn't want this to like blossom into a fuller traffic analysis that, that isn't
A number of trips and
What wasn't really the intent of the primary concern to be addressed.
I agree, because I, I, I agree with you, because the problem is that, you know, it's just such a narrow street.
Yeah. Yeah, and the example here, I actually know this road in South, Southborough was because of a school development. It had nothing to do with, like, what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not actually a good example.
Yeah. Well, yeah, but I didn't, it's a place to start. And I, I kind of agree with Joel, except that I think whatever we do, whatever form this takes, probably should look at, uh, potential techniques for, uh, mitigation, including rooting traffic around differently. Now, I'm not saying that either that this board actually by itself has jurisdiction to make those changes. I don't believe it does. But we should get that investigated nonetheless, because I think we have to look at this kind of a, something of a broader plan than just strictly the delta in safety based on increased traffic from sixteen units.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a redesign that says, if they don't go on Hildreth and they can redesign it to go somewhere else.
Or, or, or it could, it could be limiting traffic access at some point on a road that isn't even Hildreth. Now, other people would, that might create other problems, uh, might very well, but I think we should look at things like that. And also because of the existence of the school right where it is, I mean, the, the scope, the area that we look at has to probably be a little bigger than it might otherwise be. My thoughts for what they're worth.
I think we, we have to have them take a look at existing conditions. So for example, like, you know, as it is now, the lack of sidewalks, the varying width. And as you said, and, and based on letters and comments that we've received, look at a wider scope of the street. So for example, you have Plum and just second at the proposed site and other streets that feed into that whole area.
Yeah, right. The, the, the whole thing's is a, is a connected unit, apparently. That's what I got from the last
You're right, you're right about the kind of, because I, because I, I, I don't, I, I, me myself, I don't feel like that's necessary to really establish, uh, what's the, what would happen, what would happen in terms of safety and water, possible mitigations. Only because, you know, what I'm interested in is, is, I'm, because it's considered, I'm interested in pedestrian traffic on Hildreth.
Yeah.
And all I need to know is how many cars are actually moving up and down Hildreth and how fast they're moving, apart from geometries and stuff like that. I don't need to know if they're coming from, you know, summer through Grove or if they're coming from somewhere else. All I, all I care about is who, what's on Hildreth, how fast is it moving? And, and so that's why I, I thought a more limited scope would be appropriate to addressing the problem. I agree that if you're looking for a larger solution, you know, that you might want to look at some of that other stuff, but I'm not sure I would put that on the applicant to do that. I guess this is
Well, I'm thinking, I was, I was thinking that perhaps you can get some thought or analysis about this at a fairly low cost by having it batched into the same piece of work. And I don't want to cause a lot of money to be spent where it doesn't need to be spent either. But if there's going to be a traffic, any kind of traffic survey anyway, then, then
Well, if we could scope it like, yeah, if we could scope it like that, I'd, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure
Ask the applicant what they think, you know, too. They're, they're the ones with the checkbook. Okay.
So Joel, were you asking whether or not we should have it done for us? Or are you okay with the applicant?
Yeah, that, because of, only because that was my initial thought, was that this would be a study that we would essentially, uh, you know, define the scope for, have, have it done for us, uh, have the applicant fund it. But, uh, you know, again, if there's, if there's a, a different way that people want to do that, uh, then, you know, I'm okay with that too. I just thought it would be simpler for us to be able, basically, basically initiate the study and have it done for us. Because in that way you don't need a peer review. If the applicant does it, well, then now we need a peer review. And so I just thought it would be more efficient. But, uh, you know, I'm, I'm open to either way. I just, I just prefer if it's, if it's a particular interest that we have and a particular interest in what's done, done in that study, it would only make sense for us to be, to be sponsoring that as well. That was my rationale. That's, that was your question.
Is it worth asking the, uh, the applicant what their thoughts might be on, uh, setting up a
Well, I mean, I guess I've never heard of that kind of an approach. I'm not sure if that's been
It's, it's, it's a viable approach. When, when Paul Haverty had sent me the, the samples, um, I did ask him if, if, when he was engaged with the planning board and he had mentioned to the planning board, I think based upon a question Joel asked, if the board wanted expert, uh, expert witness. I think that's a term he uses, expert, expert review.
That was the term he used.
I think, uh, Paul, Paul assumed that this would follow the typical, uh, applicant submits, board peer reviews. Um, Joel makes, it's an interesting concept, uh, but I think that would be an item we, we need or want to hear from the applicant. I just don't know, I don't know if we've done that in the past. Have you, you recall doing that with forty Bs or anything?
I don't remember, I don't remember doing that. Uh, it was, it was seen that the one of them was done by Southborough. I mean, it was done for Southborough.
It had maybe been a town project? Is that what Paul just said?
I believe it was for
Was it, was it for a town project?
Yeah, my brother's mother-in-law was there.
So that may be why.
Yeah, in this setting, it's a, it's a regulatory setting. So I think the, the traditional path is applicant submits, board peer reviews, and then the, the board's peer review consultant is the board's expert. I think that may have been what Haverty was trying to distinguish.
Very similar sized roadway. It was an old car path, basically. They, they put a
Right. But if, if Joel's scenario of the applicants, uh, willing and interested, it would, would expedite it instead of, instead of the applicant paying for two studies, paying for one study. The problem is for the board, you know, who, who's the board's, who's the board's expert?
Yeah, that's, well, I mean, it would be the person conducting the study for us. That would be essentially our expert.
In that case, I think the applicant has to agree to it and there's likely some pros and cons, you know, for both parties.
Uh, so Michael's not here this evening to give a definitive answer. Unfortunately, I would lean towards not having the board commission the study and go a more traditional route. Um, what I think the, the key points that we want to understand today are what the scope actually is. So with Joel's comment about volume geometry and pedestrians being the most critical, the fact that pedestrians, it's cars and speeds that are going to be impacting that. Um, and all of that dovetails into kind of safety. If we produce, uh, a scope document from our traffic engineer that keys in on those three items, would that satisfy the board? And then you can have it peer reviewed and go the traditional route. I, I just have a hard time, uh, I think, going to sell the idea that he's going to fund a study. I have seen RSA's done where applicants have donated money to commission much broader studies as, as a part of larger projects, but this is a six lot subdivision and with that very limited scope that I think, um, has been identified, the traditional route's going to, um, answer the questions that the board has.
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd add that I, I agree with the items that, that Joel put forward and that you've expressed as, as being the most important pieces of this. Uh, there's also scope in terms of area, and because there is a school located up there, there may be some complexities into how broad an area you want, uh, this, uh, analysis to cover. You've got Hildreth, but what happens there could also have effects on, was it Plum?
Plum, yeah.
At least.
Param and Plum.
Potentially some others, but certainly Plum. And it, so it, it probably behooves us to define the, the area covered here pretty well. And I would, I would take it up at least to people walking along.
It's an isolated neighborhood.
Yeah, it is.
It's like a horseshoe shape.
We, we got to put a circle around it and say, this is what we're looking.
It's pretty common.
Yeah, can we make sure that, um, whatever analysis is done is done on full school days, not half days or days off?
Let's take that into account, you know. It'd be nice to know for all sorts of days.
So procedure, I think what I'm hearing is you want the applicant to prepare and submit a draft scope.
Well, I mean, that's their preference and I'm, I'm amenable to that.
Right. I'm just saying, instead of trying to finalize the details tonight, they submit a, a scope, show a map. Board reviews, ratifies, approves, and, and off they go with the, with the traffic related.
Yeah.
I know, I know some of the public reading the emails would like it to go to Golden Cove, but I don't know if that's on, I don't know if that's on them, to be honest with you. It's a state road and, so.
So what I'm hearing for kind of neighborhood scope is basically we have Hildreth Street that goes out to Bell Rica Road, and then we have Plum to Param to Bell Rica. So it's really kind of those three cross streets that get you back out.
There is a restriction on the other street in the morning.
I mean, would you also take Grove and Grove as well?
Is it Grove? Grove, Summer Street, the one that connects to Summer Street, which is
Grove goes to Summer and then Summer back out.
There is a restriction. I forget if it's in the
So we want to go out Grove to Summer, Summer to, um, Bell Rica. So really on Bell Rica, it's Summer, Param, Hildreth, with Plum and Grove kind of connecting those three.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
And did, uh, does the applicant have a comment that, that Chris and I contrib- contributed?
They're going, they will.
They will, okay, yeah. So you'll get our, you'll get our thoughts on it.
And I'll, and I'll forward all of the, um, about our comments related to, uh, traffic as well. That way you, your consultant can look at those
Review for
As part of scoping.
Yep, understood.
Okay. You want to move on to the environmental information report?
Just a point of clarification. This is definitely going out to peer review, correct? So if we could
Yes.
You need the scope before you can get a cost from a peer reviewer, correct?
I mean, I'm still
Okay, so I, I put up appendix A. That was, that's in the subdivision regulations. And then in your hard packet, uh, Joel provided some additional, um, items.
Oh, do you want me just to run through it quickly?
Please.
Okay. Um, I didn't have a chance to go through appendix A. I didn't, I mean, I took a quick look at it. I saw it kind of bunch of detailed stuff. Um, I can make a more detailed pass through it, but I suspect that the things that I'm really interested in are the things that I put in the, in the, in the collection. And really most of it, most of it is stuff that's basically already happening in that, uh, we just want to be able to pull it all together into one place for our information report. There were, so that, that includes the, the habitat study stuff that's going on, of which there are several things. Uh, the hydro, hydro, hydro study, the natural heritage stuff, uh, which has a potential in impacting the project in terms of what they're allowed to do. I think if, if I had to like guess at anything, that's probably the one that could, has, has the potential for the greatest impact. Uh, as far as, uh, uh, whether they rule it as a take or not, and whether there's a comprehensive management permit required and as far as whether they rule it as a take or not, and whether there's a comprehensive management permit required and that sort of thing. But then the the new studies, one I wanted to, and the first one, it was, you know, they're doing, they're already doing a habitat study per the bylaw for Concom, but that's for the that's for the wetland areas and the wetland areas, of course, include buffer zones and things like that, but also any other upland parts of the site, just to be included. I didn't think that was a real stretch, and it was just that way we can make sure the whole site is taken into consideration. Then also is proposing that they do basically what's called a twenty-one E Phase One. Or basically what you're doing is you're looking at a site to see they it's they typically tend to be small in scope. You you look at things like aerials, you go through past documents about the site, just to see, is there any reason to think that there's potential for contamination contaminants or so forth on the site? And then based on your review of the Phase One, you may conclude that there's more that's needed. It's really the Phase One that I wanted. I think that once once that comes back and I if I had to guess on that one, my guess is that it would come back as saying that, you know, basically, there really wasn't a super unusual use of the site. I know I know things that the residents residents have reported about what's happened on the site. But that's something then that will be able to give us a definitive, you know, is there was is there concern or not?
I I got one small question on that. We have observation wells going in there. They're going to detect PFAS. I presume they would pick up heavy metals. What other sorts of things are they likely to pick up and what might they not pick up?
Soil. Huh?
The soil, okay, the soil could be contaminated and not the water.
Yep.
Certainly, probably not the case with PFAS. I would think heavy metal probably be the same. I guess there are other things that could be causing trouble. I don't know what they all are.
Yeah, yeah, that's why so I figured I'd have somebody else look.
Yeah, okay, I'll have somebody else figure it out.
And and then I added just the any additional assessments based on the results of the Phase One. I mean, the Phase One comes back and says, hey, there's a serious problem here, and then I think we want to consider at that point what that means, you know. That's all. So that's really it in a nutshell.
To the applicant, you guys, I know you're hearing, I just I just handed you Joel's inputs.
Yeah.
Between Appendix A and Joel's inputs.
Exactly. So we got this a couple hours ago, kind of the updated list of things. And it really is, as Joel said, it's tallying up all the different reports and due diligence that we're doing out here. So for the quote unquote new studies, expanding the habitat for upland areas as they're qualified, I don't think that's a big deal. We're happy to do that. Now, in terms of Phase One, I did have a conversation after our last hearing where it was requested if one was already done, if it could be provided to the board. A Phase One has not been completed and nor is it intended to be completed on the site. And to Mr. Raisbeck's point, we have sunk monitoring wells. We're doing water testing to see if there is any contamination on site. If those turn out that there is, that I that that I think is the board's answer. We're we're not inclined to do a Phase One on the site. It's a single-family house.
Can we require one? They're not inclined to do it. Are we? Can we require it?
I'm not necessarily sure that it's called for. Paul.
I think we can evaluate whether we want to require it.
Paul's been around town a long time. What do you know about the use of that property? Anything in there that should raise eyebrows?
Just like the neighbor said, that recently that the grandson of the original owner was doing work there.
And so we're talking oil, petroleum, that kind of?
Could be, who knows? It's speculation.
Yeah.
But it was happening in that property.
We're not talking fifty-five gallon drums of arsenic or anything.
No, I wouldn't.
But this is going to be residential housing. I don't think it's.
Well, I my my concern would be if 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 we ask for a Phase One here, we pretty much have to ask for it everywhere. I don't think we need to do that unless we have a particular reason to think that that this particular problem of property might be at higher risk.
I think because of I think because of reports of activity on the site. I think because it's an aquifer in the aquifer district.
That's a good point.
It it is in a sensitive area.
Yeah, and yeah, and it's also a priority habitat. So I think that not, you know, any place that and I mean, this is something, too, that's probably going to be coming up when we when we start going through our rules and regulations because of the sensitivity of the issue with two seventy, Belrica, that I think we want to, as the Board of Health also is doing, and that is to sort of craft, okay, are there certain areas in town in which we're going to want to be able to see a Phase One done because of concerns about contamination? And I think in this case, because it's going to be, if it was a single-family use or something, you know, probably probably would feel like that's a little beyond. But I mean, we're talking about twelve housing units in this area. We don't really know what's there. We do have, you know, history being reported to us of things being there. We know it's a sensitive area. I think that those are things that would cause us to to want to have that. I think the next question would be, do we consider it important enough for us that if we don't have it, we would deny it? Do we have the ability to do that? You know, that's.
I don't know. I guess.
We're not there yet.
I guess I guess this is a question of of in a much broader sense where you draw the line. I'm inclined to look at this and say, this this doesn't cross the line at which I would be really nervous about getting a Phase One. But but I understand your arguments, and and, you know, it's a it's a discussion we need to have, and not just here, but.
Right.
In a lot of contexts.
It seems like it's being had everywhere.
Yeah.
Every meeting I listen to, various angles on this question are coming up, whether it's related to two seventy, whether it's related to the groundwater protection zone. I mean, it seems like it's an area that everyone wants to tighten up on. And I don't know exactly when and how that needs to happen, but I think we need to have that conversation.
Yeah, but do we have the need to have that conversation in the context of this particular application?
Well, I think.
My inclination is no.
Yeah, I think we do, and I think we also want to have that conversation with town council to advise us on, you know, the wisdom of if we want to do that or not. I mean, I think that's part of the.
That's a good question to ask now.
I think it's part of the consideration. I think it's part of the consideration.
We're a new board. We can change that direction.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you right now, because of the amount of wetlands and where this this property is, I'm inclined. Like, if you're asking me for this property, yeah, I'm inclined for a Phase One.
Yeah, I mean, if we're if we're talking about a Phase Two, I think that'd be a whole different question.
Oh, yeah.
But we're talking about a Phase One. I just I have a hard time seeing not doing it.
What are the what are the costs of a Phase One typically?
Peter Spahn would be able to tell you better than me, but my understanding was that it was in the, you know, like five, six. I could be wrong. I don't know. Do you know?
No, we don't.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that would be my guess.
So how do you want to leave this one? You want to reengage with council? Okay, I can. I'll do that via email, and then they can think about it a little bit more. My only other thought on this is if we knew the existing conditions plan shows a couple sheds, and I think the abutters indicated that some of this auto mechanic work was taking place near sheds. And then if we were to look at the location of those sheds in relation to the proposed plan, if they're anywhere near a foundation or a septic tank, Board of Health is going to be reviewing soils for septic tanks. And I think an applicant is legally obligated to report if there's over a certain quantity of soil contamination.
Plus, we're asking for their copies of their reports.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just I'm just trying to play this out, you know, in reality of a context of a construction site. You know, the the Phase One may not, it may look, it may be looking back. It may not capture the recent activity via aerials. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if you just if I went through the exercise of just looking at the property and just clicking on the different aerials on the on the town GIS, and you see all kinds of stuff happening everywhere. I mean, in terms of like vehicles popping up here and there, sheds here, then shed not there, so sort of thing. It was just, you know, something I would rather somebody have have looked at with a little more knowledge of what, you know, is that important? Is that significant or insignificant? I don't know. But, you know, it wasn't like it was always just forested the entire time. There was clearly activity going on and activity that really varied in terms of where it was, what was happening where and that sort of thing. So that was why I was.
So I'll reengage with council. We'll have his memo back to you for the next meeting.
Great.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So outside of the Phase One, which is still being discussed, do you think that the rest of this is? I mean, I think most of it is collation.
Pretty much, yeah. So like I said, we're happy to provide the wildlife, the habitat evaluation, the natural heritage piece. Board of Health will will issue it to you the same time we issue it to to other boards and commissions, absolutely. And like I I just explained, Joel's comments about evaluating upland area, it's not that much outside of the scope of what we're already doing. So I don't have an issue with that.
Okay. All right. So then do we does everyone feel comfortable that we basically have a scope outside of the question of this Phase One?
Are we currently in open public meetings?
Oh, yeah.
I'll have to open that up.
So shall we? I'll take a motion.
It's like there's a few here.
It's already open, right?
Oh, so then we just.
It's already open.
Well, we continued it. We continued it. Okay, so then let's let's open for public comment. There's anyone in the audience or community?
I'll be here for a while. I promise you that. Good evening, members of the board. My name is William Harvey. I own the property at ninety-one dash ninety-three Belrica Road, which is a two-family. I own it under a trust, and I'm the trustee. I apologize for not being here for the first meeting, but I was conveniently not provided with notice of the hearing by certified mail. So this is a little catch-up process for me. So I'm very concerned. Number one is why I wasn't received proper notice. Number two is I have a lot of experience and knowledge with regards to this neighborhood, which I think it's a beautiful neighborhood, and I've built on this neighborhood. I built a duplex conforming with the neighborhood of twelve dash fourteen Plum Street, which I believe all the neighbors was extremely happy when it was complete. And it had no impact whatsoever on the community. In fact, it fit in very well. I also built another duplex at, I believe the address is one dash three Hildreth, which was the exact same duplex I built on Plum Street. And once again, I believe that fit in very well with the community the way it was built, with the residential look, even though it was a two-family condex, which I sold it as. Number three, third property I built was at forty-three dash forty-five Grove Street, which was an old house, single-family, that I demolished and built, again, the same type of duplex as Hildreth Street and Plum Street. And most recently, I believe a time flies, but a year ago, it was actually in two thousand and twenty-two, I built ninety-five dash ninety-seven Belrica Road. And on that property sat a single-family dwelling that was in complete disarray, unlivable, and I'd consider a nuisance to the neighborhood. That was demolished, and I built a a condex. Both sides are sold, and a very nice family living in town. So this neighborhood that we're talking about on Hildreth Street, Plum Street, I forgot the other name of it. But the whole neighborhood up there is consistent with about, you know, ten thousand square foot lots, very small lots, small houses, and very, very narrow roads. So the issue is what we're developing here is the most you can possibly build on a piece of land. I'm a developer. I take in consideration my neighbors, taking consideration the board's needs. But number one is is the neighbors. They might not like that there's a development going in there, but what needs to be done is a responsible development. And that sometimes includes reducing units. And my main concern is the amount of units, the density, and the width of the roads in this neighborhood. It's not in conformity with, you know, first of all, number one is the town lacks any type of infrastructure whatsoever on Hildreth Street. Get many neighbors here that live on Hildreth Street, probably live on Plum Street or other neighboring streets. The worst street is Hildreth Street. The reason why is the width of the road. My memory of the width of the road from taking a measurement from my property at ninety-one dash ninety-three Belrica Road and ninety-five dash ninety-seven was twelve feet in width. In fact, I did something totally illegal, but it was for safety purposes when I built ninety-five Belrica Road. I had a neighbor ask me, since you get your machines here, could you please at least pull out a couple of those granite curbs that go out to Belrica Road so it might make it a little bit wider because it's so dangerous? Two vehicles cannot enter or enter, one cannot enter and one cannot exit on Hildreth Street from Belrica Road. It's impossible. You always hit your tire on the curbing. You go on my lawn. So my measurement was twelve point five. I have another neighbor. I just asked tonight. He measured his at thirteen point nine feet. So number one concern is the lack of infrastructure. On Hildreth Street is the width. Number two, there's hardly any lights on Hildreth Street. Number three, which is a huge problem for most of the housing, is the flooding. I believe there's one stone drain on the left-hand side of Hildreth Street. And again, the dangerous width of the road of the in grease, the in grease, the egress and of Hildreth Street and Belrica Road, excuse me. Now, as I stand here, I have plenty of experience in development. In fact, I'm developing a property that's almost exactly like this at the end of Tobin Avenue and North Chomsted. My road is a private road. It's called Mary Avenue. Most likely, I'm going to be before this board asking for a minor site improvement. And that minor site improvement would be to add additional parking because I've completed two buildings and I have families living there. And right now, there's an issue with parking. Just because you have a driveway and you have a garage, you have to think about the number of bedrooms, the number of cars, and also people have friends. People have company. People have families that come. This plan shows zero parking. My plan shows ten parking spaces, and I believe more, and that's not enough. So I'd ask you to take a look at the parking. Number three is I taking a look at the plan with regards to the width of the road. I don't have an answer. It didn't show it on the plan. At least I didn't see it, is whether or not this is going to be a public road or is it a private road? Does anybody have an answer for me?
Private, I believe. I think it was private.
Okay, so it's a if it's a private road, it means it doesn't meet the requirements of a public road. So they're asking for waivers with. So, they're asking for waivers with regards to safety. So, one of the waivers is to reduce it from twenty-six feet to twenty-four feet. The reason why we have a bylaw of twenty-six feet is bringing up safety concerns. So, if there's any safety concerns, there's no sidewalks, there's no parking, and they want a reduction of two feet. That's a big problem. Secondly, is take a look at the length of the driveways for the last two lots at the Common sense dictates that a driveway of that length makes zero sense whatsoever if you think that somebody's going to be backing out that distance and not have a turnaround. And, again, there's no parking. People will be parking on the grass. It's common sense. Parking on the grass, parking in somebody else's neighborhood, I mean, neighbor's lawn, is most likely what was happening at my project, is people are parking off the curb and going onto the lawn and just parking their car there. Parking is a major concern. Length of the driveway is outrageous. Number three, water department shows a water line. Last time I did a development, at least with the Chumsford Water District, is that they required what was called a looping of the water line unless that's changed. So, I don't know whether or not they changed that regulation, but what we have here is a dead-ended line that goes to a fire hydrant, which would require, number one is annual flushing, which would be paid, obviously, by the condominium association. But, secondly, is has this been addressed with the water department? Is the water department requiring this to be looped? The development I did, which was a five-unit, single-family housing development that was actually zoned our sea, but I built single-family houses because that's what the neighbors desired as well as the town at Ready Way. And the one hiccup that I had was this water department, the Chumsford Water Department, stated that they had a rule which does not allow dead-ending of water lines. Number five, my fifth concern is emergency access, asking for no sidewalks, the road to be reduced by two feet, no parking whatsoever in emergency vehicles to be able to go down this narrow road, excuse me, this narrow proposed private way, and to do a turnaround. That's an issue. And, again, I think we have one very good example of a development that doesn't have parking, and you can drive by it every day, was one that was recently built, which was called Bernard Way, which is right near this. You take a look at that, and you just see cars everywhere. There's no parking on that site. People are parking on the sides of the road. And again, I already mentioned my development, and so, and it's also, when you do these things, you learn while you go that you need parking. And I've already admitted that I've already been before this board with an approved plan showing parking, and even with the parking that I have, I'm going to have to come back and ask for maybe five more spaces just to make it more safe. I think with regards to the environmental concerns, we should all have common sense here. The main concern here is the safety concerns. If you have six buildings, it's common sense how many cars are going to be there. They're asking for a reduction on a private road of, to twenty... Excuse me. Reduction on a private road from twenty-six to twenty-four. Hildreth Street's thirteen feet, six inches at its best. That needs to be taken into consideration. Now, we have a whole host of people that are sitting here that most likely want to talk. And when we were talking, when the board's talking about traffic surveys, traffic studies, you know, peer review, expert review, these are your experts. These are your peer review, people that have lived on Hildreth Street their entire lives. They're the direct testimony of exactly what they endure day in and day out of having to pull over, let their neighbor come down the street, and vice versa. Now, with this development, the amount of cars creates a whole different neighborhood, whole different neighborhood, and the infrastructure of this road doesn't support it. If anything, a responsible developer would, number one, take a look at the land, and rather than jamming a whole bunch of two families in, saying, "Hey, we got the twenty thousand. Let's put them all in," rather than looking at the whole pie, which is the neighborhood. So, if this wants to be part of the neighborhood, I think it's way overblown. The town can't handle this many cars, the pedestrians, there's no sidewalks, the road's not even legal, there's no lighting, the drainage is horrendous. There's people here right now that'll tell you all the water going down the driveways. What I see here is a responsible development would be a maximum of three condenses. That's what I would see, and no more. And that's all based on the neighborhood, Hildreth Street. Now, if Hildreth Street was miraculously transformed by the town into a legal-sized road with sidewalks, with lighting, appropriate drainage, I wouldn't see a problem with this whatsoever. This is... There's a serious problem here. Safety concerns, many other concerns. And again, I only recently got notice of this, so I had to rush and do my homework. I ever copied the plans. I reviewed the plans. I've actually hired my own engineer to review the plans myself, and I'll be discussing it with him further. And I can promise the board that if this board somehow decides to approve such a project, I'll be the first one appealing it. And I'll tell you, this will be going to land court, and this is one that I'll win. And I usually win them all. So, Property Possible Inc. will be deemed Property Possible, Property Possible Not when I'm done. And these neighbors who have lived in the town most of their lives should have the consideration first. The project should be substantially reduced. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out. I'm Kristy Wood, sixteen Hildreth Street. I actually wanted to first say, I wasn't planning on it, but I would like to reiterate many of the facts that Mr. Harvey wasn't, you know, had made about the traffic. It was a good point that he made about, you know, the extra people that we didn't even maybe take into consideration, people coming over to visit, all that. That's adding many more cars to the, you know, to the mix. But what I really wanted to say was, I just wanted to bring to... I just wanted to talk about the stone wall a little bit. And I do know that the Historical Society met last night. They did not have a quorum. So, they are going to meet again on, I believe it's November's...
No, Chris, excuse me. It's November seventh they're meeting, and they couldn't act on it, not because they didn't have a quorum, but because the address was incorrect on their behalf.
All right. So, they... Right. So, they'll be meeting again on November seventh, and just if you could just reiterate with the applicant that it really is up to the Historical Society whether or not that well can be touched or not. That's not something that they can decide or others. Another point that I wanted to bring up is something that I wasn't planning on bringing up tonight because it's more of a commission issue, but since the... There was talk about the, you know, the potential contaminants and studies being done in that area. I have looked through the regulations, and in the DEP, in the CMR three-ten, and I believe it is the ten fifty-five area, it also talks a little bit about Borgitate... No, I'm sorry. BVW, the bordering vegetated wetlands. And it talks about how the roots of plants hold contaminants. So, the roots of plants that are in wetland areas and bordering wetlands hold contaminants, and that is a normal thing to happen. That's what's supposed to happen. But what is... But when those plants are disrupted in any way, the contaminants become loose, and they go into the water and into the land and into the soil. And keeping in mind that this is on the town aquifer, I think that's an important, you know, piece of it. So, whether or not the testing that's being done, I'm not sure, you know, can also takes that into consideration. But that's just something I just wanted to bring into your minds as well, that there might be more to it than we fully understand, and hopefully, the commission will be able to shed some light on that. So, thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Ask You Comp Toys, twenty-four Hildreth Street. I'd like to thank the board for requesting that a safety study is done, specifically about pedestrians, the use of Hildreth Street. As we have mentioned multiple times, Hildreth Street is not a normal-sized street. It is much smaller than any other street I've seen in the area. But in the study, in looking at this study, what I would like to request is that not only do we look at it today, but we take a look at it as when the winter comes. Once we have snow, our thirteen-foot road goes down, and one car can get out of the street. There's no way to pass each other. So, I think that's something that we need to look at because it limits the amount of street there is for not only a car to travel, but for our children to get to and from the center school and the pedestrians that are walking the street daily. So, I would hope that that would be taken into consideration, that we don't just look at it as it is today in the fall or in the spring and summer, but winter is also a season that is considered because it drastically changes the way our street looks. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Did you say you were at twenty-four?
I'm at twenty-four, yes.
So, you're at the end of the...
I am at the end of the dead-end street.
Tell me about, I've been down that street, but what happens when cars go down there?
My driveway is a turnaround.
By accident.
My driveway and my neighbor's side yard become turnaround streets because most people don't realize, and it says multiple times on the street, that it is a dead-end street. They come down thinking that on the maps that you guys have, there is a paper road that crosses the creek that really isn't there, and they come down and they try to cross over onto Brook Street. Well, they realize they can't do that, so they turn onto my property, they turn onto my side yard, they go up to the Johnsons' property, which is right above me, and once they pass that fire hydrant at the end of Hildreth Street, they are now crossing into private property. The fire hydrant is the delineation of where Hildreth Street officially ends, based on the town, which is at the beginning of my driveway, and from my driveway up to the Johnsons' property is private property. So, we have daily people coming down, turning around on our property to get back out because they've realized, even though there are multiple signs that say dead-end, they can't go anywhere. So, we've had our yards torn up. In the wintertime, we had a truck that came down, realized he couldn't go anywhere, asked to turn around on my property. I was out shoveling, I said, "Absolutely." Figured he was going to back into my driveway and turn around, and decided to drive onto my grass, got his truck stuck, ripped up the grass under the snow before he finally could get off. In the springtime, we had divots from his tires in our grass. So, it fell on us to have to, you know, fill the divots, replace, you know, reseed, regrass, and it happens daily. We seed cars coming down late at night that use my driveways to turn around, make it all the way to my neighbor's house and find out, well, I can't go anywhere, the driveway, the road just ends, that's their driveway, and are backing onto their property to come out of the street and back up to find another way. It's really bad, I hate to say sometimes, when school first starts, people are trying to find a cut-around in Billerica Road. Can I get out another way? And it's become a problem.
Thank you.
No problem.
Oh, yeah. One other quick thing. Actually, two things for you. First of all, there was talk about a drain pipe. That drain pipe was only put in with the last ten years. It really doesn't do anything. The city doesn't maintain it. So, it rains, it floods. What it was put in for doesn't work, and there are no lights on Hildreth Street. There are none. Once it gets dark, it's dark. There's... On Plum Street, there are no lights. So, it's not...
One light.
Oh, sorry. One light. No, there's... Thought there was one. So, there really isn't anything there. So, those are some other things that were talked about and to be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Woods, sixteen Hildreth Street. Just wanted to touch on a moment of fact. I confirmed that with the McMasters that live at ten. There is no drainage on Hill... Oh, six. Oh, yeah. Six. The ten is the one we were talking about, yeah. They put a drain in front of their house. It's just a well, and it's already full of mud, and it just... And I'm at sixteen, which is the low point on Hill Street, so I get all the way from Billerica Road, it comes down to my driveway. I had it replaced by driveway five, two or three years ago because it infiltrates my driveway. There is no drainage on that street. My drainage is my driveway. Comes to my house. And if you look, I digged some trenches before my driveway, but not very effective. The other concern I know is talking about, you know, we were thinking about the proposed subdivision, and you think of all these different things that happen in life. I'm a retired firefighter from, not this community, a few years ago as lieutenant. And we always say, nothing's Jake-proof, meaning nothing can be not broken by a firefighter, depending on what the configuration finally be is. I know there's also SOPs at fire departments, "Don't pack in the driveways, don't do this, don't do that." Real life, like everybody says. Three in the morning, you're on that road, it's full of snow, I got to get that truck turned around. They back in one of those driveways that have a septic system under that driveway, fifty thousand tons fractures that septic system, and they drive away, nobody knows. For years, that's leaking sewage into the aquifer. You know, those are just things that, you know, potentially can happen. I mean, it's not the best design to have septic systems under driveways. It's poor practice, you know? Like I said, reduce the size of the development, you don't have to do that. You can pull the septic systems from underneath. That's just a point of interest. That's all. Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. Just looking on the map, does the post office not deliver mail to you?
No. They say it's too narrow.
Why is that?
Too narrow. And they can't turn around. They won't turn around their driveway.
At the end of Plum Street?
We finally got trash to pick up when they just switched it, and they drive down the street, and they back up the street. That's... I've never put out till two months ago.
Two months ago.
I had to drag my barrels down to Plum Street, I mean, to Plum and Hildreth.
So, if male women, if the mail doesn't go down to the street...
That stuff's right here.
Yeah. Yeah, they... We have just a hodgepodge of mailboxes there that are just gathered.
I just saw that. I don't know why.
Yeah. Yeah, they say it's too narrow, you know?
Is Hildreth a public street?
Ours is.
Or is it a private street?
Portions of it are town-accepted.
My portion is...
All of it's town-accepted?
No.
They don't believe so.
The funny part is, my street is, because Mr. Byram used to live on the corner before he... Byram School, and he worked for the post office when I first moved. He used to laugh. He goes, "I get mail brought to my house, and you're the accepted part of the street, and you have to walk up the road." Yeah. Just, yeah. So...
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Emily McMaster. I live at six Hildreth Street. I just want to talk about the traffic study because I was coming home today when the kids were coming home from school. I'm coming down the street, there's a car coming up the street, and there's seven children running down the street. I watched mothers try to grab them and keep them. Both of us cars were stopped because we know the neighborhood, but we see cars come by that are doing forty miles an hour up Hildreth Street because they're trying to cut off and get up to Billerica Road. Now, if they're on that street, when these children who are pulling away from mom because it's fun to do, they're going to get hit. um, they're gonna get hit. So we really need a good study if you're gonna do a study about the traffic in that area. Thank you.
How you doing, Nate Montero, number four? To Anita's point, um, you mentioned that the traffic study on school days, I'd ask that the applicant considers it when it's not raining and not snowing. Already, when it rains, my wife has to bring my daughter to school because she won't walk, so.
Good point.
There's no kids on school on, on the street that day. And it rains a lot in Chelmsford, so.
Especially.
There's, there's not a lot of kids walking when it rains out. So I'd like that, specifically on a back-to-back 48-hour day, that it's not raining and you have kids to from, to from. Because that makes a lot of sense versus snow and rain, so. And I'd reiterate what everyone said, and especially the gentleman before, um, it's just too big, so. Thanks a lot, thanks for your time.
Alright.
Um, no one's indicated that they want to speak.
Make a motion?
I would move to continue until, um, what's the best when's we're just gonna continue to?
When you want to continue to?
25th is full, right?
25th is full.
Um.
December 8th.
You think you'll be ready for the 25th?
Uh, yeah. No, it's full. The 25th is full.
The, the goal.
We have, uh, on the 25th, you have, um, you have, uh, Dalton Road. 93 Brick Hill was continued until November 8th. And you're opening 270.
And then we, what's this, 61 Central Square and 28 Parley Road?
Is that on the agenda?
Yes. And then we have the, what did we say that we started?
We have the NMCAG.
NMCAG.
And, and we have the hour-long discussion for MBTA with the.
Right, so 25th is, no.
If that doesn't work.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Uh, if we could do the 25th and limit discussion to the scope of the traffic so that we can commission the study and move forward on our.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
I would buy that.
That's good.
And then we're not doing the public input?
You don't need to.
So we can continue that to an extent?
So you're gonna come that night with the scope and we're gonna agree to the scope?
Okay.
And then we can start our study.
Okay, so we, we need to let the word out that there will be no public hearing that night.
No, no, because if we're gonna agree to a scope, then the public should have an input to the scope, so, no.
They should, but they don't necessarily have to have it that night.
I don't care, I want them to have an input, it's their neighborhood and.
And let's vote on it.
So I don't think the 25th is a doable day, I think our next available is November 8th.
Just delaying though, we're just asking for a scope.
Alright, but we're booked fully on the 25th. Our next available is the November 8th, does that work for you?
25th would work better.
So you don't want to come on the 25th?
No, they do want to come on the 25th.
If they are coming with the scope, we wouldn't necessarily be agreeing to the scope at that time, right? Or would we be agreeing?
They would be looking for agreement of the scope after they review it.
Yeah. It would be, it would be the substantial discussion of the scope.
Yeah, I absolutely don't. Not rushing through this, this is too important.
So why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you submit by the 25th the scope? And then we meet for a public meeting on the 8th to discuss it. But you're gonna give us time to review it outside of here.
And we could have it to you next week.
Okay, that makes, that works.
But I think we'll still discuss it on the 8th.
Why, why should we do a straw poll? Who wants it? You asked for other opinions?
Whenever we do it, I would, I wouldn't want the public to be able to.
Yeah. The public.
The 25th is.
I don't want to feel, I don't want to have it be rushed.
Yeah, it would feel like it would be a ridiculous night.
I agree, it's pretty sensitive thing.
So we'll get it sometime between now and the 8th and we will.
On the 25th, now on the 25th.
And then we will discuss it at a public input on the.
11.
11, 8, I thought it was the 8th.
The 8th.
We'll have it ahead.
Yes.
Good.
Okay.
Making, making a motion to continue?
To November 8th.
Well, the motion's already up, I just haven't figured out what date to continue to yet.
8th.
8th, 8th, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
So continuation, now we have a continuation. Um, should we go back to item number four? Which was the groundwater protection draft?
Now, that's a request for continuation, so I think we need to vote on it, don't we?
Oh, yeah, we have to vote on it, okay. So I'll take a motion.
Move we grant continuation of 93 Brick Hill?
I'll second that.
And we already have a date picked, I believe?
November 8th.
November 8th, okay.
And you need to, uh, vote a withdrawal.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, so let's, one at a time.
Aye.
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 What, what was that vote?
Unanimous.
93 Brick Hill.
And then I'll give you a motion to, uh, grant the withdrawal without prejudice on 10 Cross Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. Then we'll go back to item number four, which is the Water Department's, um.
Board of Health.
I mean Board of Health, sorry, draft. Thank you. And this is, um, for information, basically, I mean, I, I don't think they're looking for us to comment on it, are they?
Yeah, well, I was actually there at the Board of Health meeting and they brought it up and they discussed their, the regulations and, um, actually made a couple of comments there. But just not, not, not as a, not providing board input, but just, you know, saying.
Citizen input.
As a citizen input or whatever. But I did say when they were sending it out to different places, like Concom and so forth, I said, you know, I think that I would like the planning board to be able to have it too, so that we can comment on it, so. Because the, the groundwater protection zone regulation is very closely tied to that for Protection District bylaw.
Yeah.
I, the APD was put into place first and then the GPV regulation came a couple of years after that. So I thought it would be good to, just to look at it from that perspective.
So I guess I have a question on it, that, I mean, they haven't been adopted, this is a draft, but they're.
It has, there, there is a version that's been adopted.
Is that the 4, the 4.3 one? They, they did an update on 4.3?
They did do an update on 4.3.
Okay. And does the one on the update that's 4.3 that's been adopted, does that include soil testing?
No.
No.
Okay.
No, it doesn't.
So is that the main new thing?
I think, I haven't had a chance to look at it in detail.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we have a red line to this? To the whole policy?
Yeah, red line.
Because that would be ideal, we could have a red line what they've added.
Yeah.
That is the main, the soil testing is, is the main addition under consideration. Yeah, I mean, I, we have the, we got the earlier version at the Water District. The big meeting we have with the Water District and Board of Health and all that, so I could compare, so I could compare while we have this with that one and let you know what's.
Yeah, that would be nice to know. I, I, I'm a little bit concerned here. Uh, soil testing sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
I will say, but it says.
What are we talking about?
Shall be conducted throughout the property. Exactly what that means is not completely clear to me. I mean, if one sample cover the whole property, how many samples?
That wouldn't be throughout then.
Well, then what would be, two?
Yeah.
Four, eight?
So we should ask for clarification of that, that needs to be.
Yeah, we need.
It would be our input, is you, you want to define that, yeah.
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 What's a typical, what's a typical report would do, how many on a site?
That I don't know.
Do you want a grid area?
I mean.
Do you check up for quarter acre?
But what's the percentage of? I don't know, but I would, I would say, again, Peter Spahn on the Concom, that's, that's been his business.
Yeah.
So he probably would have a good idea.
Yeah, why don't we get an idea?
Be able to say, know what they would require.
It would be interesting, yeah.
The DEP would require.
Yeah.
And so if this were to be adopted, like, what is the likely timeframe under which it would be adopted? And for instance, would these regs pertain to the Hildreth project?
Yeah, particularly.
Specifically, that's what I'd like to know. Because if not, then I would like to maybe request that we.
If we're heading that way.
Put that in our scope, which is a bit different than the phase one.
If we think we're heading that way anyway, this is in front of us, why not?
Right.
That would be a phase, that would be more of what I would put in the category of a phase two.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, if that's how the whole regulation is gonna go, and we have specific concerns about this project, I, I, would it, would we be within our right to, or really adopt?
We'd have to ask Paul, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. The other thing is, I mean, this is drafted as a.
Are we out of our wheelhouse?
As a Board of Health regulation. And seems to be a perfectly reasonable regulation, I will say. But, um, just exactly what our jurisdiction.
It would be under the Board of Health.
It's under the Board of Health, it's not under us.
It wouldn't be under us anyway.
So, so all we're really doing is looking at comments here. We're not in any way, shape or form likely to be enforcing this, which is.
The context for the, for the, um, the Board of Health asking for departments and boards and commissions to review, I think the Planning Board and Concom have already started this.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, an effort to be better coordinated, particularly within the regulatory.
Right.
The Board of Health, I think, is just kind of getting up to speed on that concept. And I'm, it's not clear to me to what extent they understand how other boards and commissions are looking towards the Board of Health process to.
For input.
To provide, uh, uh, data and input. I think that's where the Planning Board and Concom, uh, comments to the, to the Board of Health on process and procedure may be beneficial. And then if Peter Spahn and others have more technical information to, to beef up the, the soil testing. I mean, as we're sitting here, it dawns on me that maybe, maybe in order to define throughout, a phase one is done. Because I don't, throughout is, that's pretty expensive and what, you need to identify the warranted reason for.
Depends on how big your grid is.
Right, 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 right. But I think, I think if, if, if commissions are providing input and planning boards providing input, and even if, you know, Joel's is more technical and other members are more procedural, I think that's beneficial. But I, I think the, the notion of, um, the town's regulatory boards being better coordinated is really important. Particularly if Planning Board and Conservation are gonna be relying on Board of Health outputs.
Right.
I think that, that needs to be articulated better because it's not, it's not clear to me at this point um, to what extent the Board of Health. It's clear that the Board of Health relies on the Water District.
Right.
But the Water District's interests are not exactly the same as the Commission or the Planning Board.
Right.
And so that, that leaves, I think, the Planning Board, when we talk about whether it's 270 or Hildreth, I think the Planning Board is still trying to figure out what exactly is its jurisdiction without being too duplicative.
Right, exactly. But to make sure that things are addressed.
Right, and so I think, you know, Joel and Chris can speak to this in more detail. I just think we're, we're trying to find our way collectively.
Right.
And this is the first example of that.
Yeah.
Right.
And it may not be, this may not be the best place to start, but that's where we are.
Well, I, I got another question or two about it. Uh, first of all, uh, do we have good enough, solid enough information town-wide to be able to fairly categorically state the groundwater does or does not, is or is not directed toward an existing well?
That, well, for the Aquifer Protection District, that is.
That has enough information to cover this?
Well, there's a map.
Okay.
And the map, you're either in, in the map.
Okay.
Or you're not in the map.
So it's, are you on the map or not?
And that's, and that's not something that we decide.
Right, fine.
ZBA decides it if you want to, as an applicant, appeal it. But, but right now, if you're in the map, you're in.
But we have a definitive, there's a definitive source for this. The second is future water source.
Yep.
We have to figure out, you need to figure out what that means. For example, uh, the Warren Farm, when that was set up, there was some reservation of rights.
Misty Meadow had the same thing.
Misty Meadow had the same thing. Uh, does this have to be a, a future water source that has some, some regulatory or, uh.
You would think it would have some initial.
Something in writing, if you will.
It's, it's a vague area of the regulation. I don't think that's one that's been, um, prodded.
Yeah, well, poke.
Poke the product. Certainly, I think certainly you can include, for example, the Chelmsford Water District wells that are near 93 Brick Hill. They only operate them in the summer for a few months.
Right, but they do have wells, those are existing ones.
But those are existing wells, and so they are potential future water supply in the sense that they could operate them all year long. Same way with East Chelmsford.
Well, that, that, I, I don't have any debate with wells that are used part-time.
Right.
Because it's the same problem.
Or even that a well is there, but they're not using it.
Yeah, or even.
That to me is still a potential future.
But I'm more, I'm more concerned about how this might, because if you look, if you look at what little agricultural space we have left in the town, there ain't much. Uh, oh, a lot of it borders wetland areas that could potentially, it may have sweat land, there's water there. And where do you go when you're gonna, want to get water? Well, look at where our, where all our wells are, most of them are in wetland, or very close to it. And I, I, I worry that we would just start finding that pretty much any place in town is potentially a future well, and I wouldn't want to see that happen.
Yeah, I mean, the definition of that, I think you're exactly right.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that was a other comment that I was making was that there aren't, there isn't a good definition of triggers. You know, when do you do this?
Yeah, right.
Do this every time?
What, what triggers it, what, anyway.
And we, I mean, we had the same conversation tonight.
Okay.
Like Aquifer Protection, environmental sensitivity, but whatever, but there, there's gotta be something that says, yeah, this is, it would seem to me an, a burden to put on everybody who comes before you to do soil testing.
We don't want to do that, we don't want to do that, but we want to do it where it's warranted, whatever that means.
So that's. That's, that's good information to, for the Board of Health to hear from Concom or Planning Board. And I think that the challenge that the Board of Health may have is it, they don't have as much exposure as Planning Board and Concom do on a regulatory.
Right.
Uh, side of things. And this, this bylaw regulation, while it's been in place for a while, also hasn't been evoked, uh, very often. So that's, that's fantastic perspective that the Planning Board can provide into.
Okay.
You know, do you truly want every, every.
Do we have a liaison to the, to the Board of Health?
What's that?
Do we have a liaison?
No, that was one thing I was gonna bring up with the liaison.
We just got rid of it, yeah. We got rid of it at the organizational meeting because we were.
Because they never did anything that concerns us, right?
Usually didn't, and.
Yeah.
They have their correspondence and their, like, I was so frustrated there. I went to all their meetings.
I gotta admit, they ought to change the way they run their meetings.
I'll, I wouldn't mind doing it unless, Joel, you want to do it, I mean.
I'm planning on being there, so.
You are.
Okay, what days of the week is it?
Monday once a month.
First Monday of the month.
Yeah.
I could probably make it. I I used to go periodically anyway during the Great Chicken Wars.
Between the three of you is what.
Yeah, you used to be called up there.
Somebody will be there.
You were called up there on the Great Chicken Wars.
And I kept an eye on them for about a year.
So does, so I think the Board of, the Board of Health is looking to put this on their October agenda. I want to say it's the twenty-third because they asked for comments back by the twentieth. Does, how does the Board want to proceed? Do we have enough information for someone to summarize? Maybe email it out between now and the twenty-third and.
Well, I think right off the bat, throughout the property needs to be tightened up, as does future water source.
Yeah, well, the future water source question, the triggering question, and the, what was the third one?
Throughout the property?
Uh, yeah, and and the, what exactly does covering the whole lot mean? Those, those are the three that I saw.
You're right.
Okay. Are you gonna be there?
Yes.
I'll join you.
Okay.
What the heck. Have a beer after.
All right. Yeah, their meetings are fast usually.
Every now and then, they're duking it out with a, you know, with a restaurant.
Where we actually had our conversation was in the public input. So which they have at the end. And so then when they sort of, they did all their paper shuffling and stuff like that, that they do. And that sort of thing, and then it was sort of like, well, public input, and so then we, you know, started asking questions. Got into a nice discussion.
Well, why don't, why don't we see if we can actually get put on their agenda then?
Well, that's what I was wondering, is to, is to have like, you know, like Concom put Chris on their agenda.
Yeah.
You know, the PB input during public input.
Well, that, yeah, that's a good way to get, get clean input.
Yeah, I think just to add us as a permanent line item under their public input part would be a good way to do it.
Okay.
I think that's just.
For both minutes?
Any other liaisons on updates?
Forget.
Any other preparations for town meeting? I guess I'm gonna present the nursing home thing since it'll be my third time.
Well, I do have a liaison update.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did go to the commission meeting last night. And one of the things that came up had to do with the Brook path
Oh, yeah.
along. Behind Old Fellas. Yes, yes, yes. And what, what they brought up, Peter Spahn, Ken, brought up was that that they that it's a listed hazardous waste site. He asked them to take a look at that. That apparently recently on August twenty-second, they, there was an LSP that found PFAS in the parking lot. He measured groundwater was about two and a half times above.
E twenty-two, twenty-three?
My birthday.
August twenty-second, twenty nineteen, nineteen twenty-three.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-three, yeah. And that, that there were no samples done in the soil. That the LSP submitted for down gradient property status by Concom two seventy, DEP denied that.
It was declined, right?
It was declined or denied, yeah, so they do not have down gradient property status. And so basically, the question was, well, how do you want to move forward? Because they were before, the town was before the Concom to have that, that walkway essentially built. And so now, now there's questions about, okay, how do you handle soil? Are you gonna take soil samples, are you gonna do all of that sort of thing, so.
They got into the roots, just like that lady brought up.
Yep, so, so all of that's going on with that.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so I just thought that was an interesting thing to know.
It was interesting.
Yeah.
The other interesting thing was the, we'll talk about the pitch and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Mike brought that up.
Yeah.
No, they had already been talking about it before.
They, they, yeah, they talked about it that night, last night.
Anyway.
That's it.
And and, you know, I'm just gonna say as a placeholder that we had a conversation, Evan and I had a conversation about, if you look at the front of the building and you look at the picture, there's supposed to be a walkway connecting the Brookwalk to.
On the right side of the building, right?
On the right side of the building.
Left, as you're looking at it.
And there's currently a big, huge, I don't know what, metal structure for electricity, maybe.
They're supposed to have a patio out there, too.
And also, a wall and a fence and some little spruce trees that don't match the picture at all and doesn't have that path at all.
We're not done, I, as I mentioned.
Right, I know, I'm just saying it out loud.
Yeah. Phase one was the residential units, which are in the process of being occupied. Phase two is the restaurant. So the outdoor patio seating, the connection, the connection out to the back is all part of phase two.
What was all the dig in town?
The person who sent an email to you, which I re-forwarded to you today, so you probably didn't even look at it.
No, I just saw it when I walked in.
Com commented about how there's no safe way to walk. I mean, the only way to walk out of that proposed Brookwalk is through the parking lot and then down a street.
Correct.
Into traffic that's gonna hit you.
I, I'll say this because it's, it's, it's on my mind at this point. The, the plan that was eventually approved was a shell of the original proposal that was denied.
Right.
The original approved, the original proposal
That was denied.
That was denied, had all of the bells and whistles. It had dedicated pedestrian paths outside of parking lots. What was left, which is what the Commission is dealing with, may not, the Commission may not even approve the Brookwalk.
Right. Well, the Mass DEP might not either.
Forget, forget DEP. The Commission may not even approve it, even though they've already accepted the easement. So the, the email that the residents ask is concerned about that in order to get to certain parts of the municipal parking lot, you have to walk through an active parking lot. Yeah. But that, but that's, but that's.
After a road with oncoming traffic to get to the sidewalk.
It's a drive aisle in a parking lot, yes. Yeah, because what the Planning Board eventually approved was a Brookwalk on private property through a di, outdoor dining area.